Call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, may those generations whose faces we cannot yet see, whose names we may never know, say of us here that we led Orange County into a time of hope for all our children with the promise of a bright future, a reality for all her people, and an opportunity for each individual to achieve his or her goals in life. May God give us the wisdom to know His purpose and to strengthen us for the good work ahead. And always, always bless those gathered here and throughout our county, our state, and our nation. Amen.
Stepped up the game. Okay, before we begin, there are several changes from the original printed agenda. We added item four B and item seven E, also nine B, and item eleven A sub section I. Are there any other changes? In that case, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, on the consent agenda, before you do that, I would like to remove the March twelfth minutes from consent because I wasn't here for half the meeting.
Okay.
So with that, can I get a-
I would move to approve the consent agenda minus the March twelfth minutes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then on to the March twelfth.
I move to approve the March twelfth minutes.
Second, okay. I'll do a roll call on that one.
Mr. Goodwin?
Abstain.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Mr. Crane?
Hi.
Mrs. Abbs?
Aye for the part that I was here for.
And Mr. White?
Hi.
Okay. With that then, we move to public appearances. And the first thing is the business spotlight with Deanne Marshall.
Hello, my name is Deanne Marshall of Marshall Dairy, Marshall Farms Natural Cheese, and Marshall Farms Corner Deli. We are an organic grazing dairy farm that have been in the dairy business for over thirty years. And we milk up to four hundred and fifty cows twice a day. And we have a contract with Horizon that buys our milk. For our cheese, we started our cheese about ten years ago. We take a small amount of our milk and have the cheese made by a cheesemaker. And we sell the cheese at our store, we wholesale to local wineries and natural food stores, and we do food shows and wine festivals all over the state. We currently have six different flavors of cheese. We have cheddar, garlic type parsley, buffalo cheddar, sun dried tomato and basil, pepper jack and peppercorn cheddar, which I bought a platter for you guys.
Yeah.
For appetizer. We started our store, Marshall Farms Corner Deli, about nine years ago. We offer made-to-order breakfast and lunch, and we offer vegetarian options, and we can also do gluten-free items. We have a catering menu where we offer boxed lunches, sandwich platters, cheese, meat, and fruit trays, and even a hot breakfast. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a friend of mine that lives down outside of Williamsburg. And when Eric Von Guerin had his restaurant, your cheese was there.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, he specifically told me that he used y'all. I thought that was interesting, you've got a reach.
Yes, yes.
Deanne failed to mention it, but each morning she resides over a town hall District Two meeting over coffee and various breakfast items.
Pointy characters, yes.
And it is quite a show, there's no question.
And I've eaten breakfast there, it's very good.
Thank you.
Okay, next then is the presentation of proclamation for National County Government Month. I have a proclamation for National County Government Month, smart justice creating safer communities. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the month of April as National County Government Month in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas the nation's three thousand sixty-nine counties provide a variety of essential public services to communities serving more than three hundred billion Americans. And whereas the county of Orange and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. And whereas county governments are often the entity providing both direct and indirect services to enhance the lives of residents and are responsible for maintaining public safety and the efficient use of local tax numbers. And whereas currently more than thirteen million individuals are booked into county jails each year, and more than seven hundred thousand individuals are booked into state and federal prisons. And whereas the National Association of Counties President Chris Rogers is encouraging counties to promote effective community corrections programs across the country through his two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Smart Justice Presidential Appreciate. And whereas each year since nineteen ninety-one, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services to the public they serve. And whereas Orange County is dedicated to promoting awareness and involvement in public safety through our Citizen Police Academy, a program sponsored by the Sheriff's Office that expands community-based efforts and is intended to open lines of communication between the community and the Sheriff's Office, as well as train individuals and produce informed citizens. And whereas through the cost-effective use of grant monies, the Orange County Department of Fire and Emergency Services implemented the National Fire Protection Association's Remembering Wind Program that focuses on the senior, age sixty-five-plus community, a group of citizens that are disproportionately impacted by deaths through fires and falls. And whereas the Orange County Department of Fire and Emergency Services has also installed defibrillators in all county buildings, patrol and law enforcement vehicles, several of the schools, and fire and EMS vehicles, and is expanding their initiative to install additional defibrillators throughout the other areas of the community. And whereas through implementation of Smart nine-one-one program, Orange County has provided a way to enhance the health, safety, and welfare of residents by offering an avenue for citizens to provide medical history and family information so that nine-one-one calls are handled quickly and professionally. And I've already done that. And whereas through relationships, local, state, and federal agencies and programs, Orange County indirectly provides public safety services that enhance the lives of our residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes April two thousand thirteen as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in the county government celebration activities and take the initiative to become involved in public safety programs through the community. And I think there's supposed to be three people there everybody could get these things. One for you, sir. One for you. Pick a ball. One for you and everybody get it, I guess. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank God. Next, we would have the TJ Ped presentation with Helen Coffin.
Thank you. And because you were not able to attend our celebration on Thursday, have a little, very small, won't get you in any trouble, gift for each of you.
Where's I?
I'm Helen Coffin. Believe it or not, I've been here just over a year now and feel like I've learned a lot since I moved to Central Virginia last February first. I do want to take a moment, first of all, to just thank you all very much. Orange County has really been a partner of this regional organization since its inception, is my understanding. Julie Sums is currently our vice chair, she'll serve as chair next year. She's been a terrific supporter. Karen Epps is one of our critical economic development partners. And we just really appreciate you all's longstanding support. I'm very fortunate to get to work with such a talented group of people from across the region. And now I'm at least finally figuring out who's who and how to get everywhere I need to go. But still, there's still plenty of people I need to get to know even better. What I wanted to share with you today is last Thursday, March twenty-first, we unveiled our new brand at an event at the University of Virginia's Research Park. It was hosted by the University of Virginia Foundation and attended by about seventy people. And what was really exciting about it was, it really was a regional group. And that's why I wish that more of our elected officials could have joined us, although we did have a number of them, because it did show that we're a regional organization. So I appreciate that. The one that, it's kind of funny, last June, when I first got here, Julie had the suggestion that one of the things we could do is get, I'm sorry, thank you. I appreciate that. Get the county administrators together. And we brought them all up here to Orange. So all of our eight juristic, eight counties plus city Charlottesville were at the Orange County Airport.
With some Marshall Farms food.
There you go, it was excellent. Breakfast. And what I asked them was, what can TJ Ped do to really make a difference to this region? And I hope I'm not losing my voice, isn't that crazy? I have talked all day, maybe that's the problem. And one of the areas they discussed was whether our current brand really told the story of this region. Oops, excuse me, wrong one. So under the tutelage of the Ivy Group, our group learned a lot about brands and brand promises and what they're supposed to deliver. So the TJ Ped current logo, what does it really say about our region? Is it really telling our story well? Questions we asked ourselves during the branding process were many. What are we delivering, what are we promising? How does that brand reflect what the region has to offer? And when you think about the name Thomas Jefferson, although it is near and dear to our hearts in Virginia, it leaves out a very important president that's also in the region, that you all are extremely familiar with. And as esteemed as the name is, it's used across the country in many different states, many different localities, and it's really cluttered in the marketplace. So how are we using this name and really differentiating ourselves? So after quite a bit of deliberation, the board decided to proceed with rebranding and formed a task force of board members and the localities economic development partners, including Karen Epps, to bring recommendations back to the board. They went through a lot of information, the board did, as well as the task force, including things like shared strengths identified during our target markets report that I presented to you all last year. We also did work sessions with the board. We're really trying to develop that key messaging, highlighting our great location, talented workforce, and outstanding quality of life. For those who haven't seen it yet, I will reveal our brand tonight. It's energetic, dynamic, it has the pinstripe business gray with blues and greens to represent our very beautiful natural environment. So our new name is Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development. It leverages Virginia, the best state for business, and identifies our location within that state. As Martin Bryley, the CEO of Virginia Economic Development Partnership, said last Thursday at our news announcement, "We need a louder voice and a bigger footprint in the marketplace, and this logo helps with that." Secretary of Commerce Jim Chang was also at our event, congratulated us on the new brand, and then pointed out, something I hadn't really paid attention to, that the name changed, but the word partnership stayed the same. Our tagline is Bold Ventures Begin Here. Now I'd like to just quickly walk you through our key messages. What is it that we're going to say about the region? Realize that we're not necessarily using these messages verbatim, but they're kind of the underpinning of what we're going to say about ourselves. So it may not be these exact words that we use, but these are kind of the themes that will help us get that message out in the marketplace. The first is really regional collaboration. All of us working together, and I think that name really says that as well as anything else. Thomas Jefferson is typically seen as Charlottesville Almar. Central Virginia includes all of us. Strategic location. We have an outstanding mid-Atlantic location, easy access east-west and north-south to interstates. One of the things we started thinking about, so we're actually, we have, we're, east-west, we have I sixty-six and I sixty-four, and north-south, we're pretty much bordered by interstates eighty-one and ninety-five. So I think that's a real asset for us, a terrific regional airport, Amtrak, other rail service, a lot of strategic assets. Also, it's such a good business environment. We have an exciting story to tell about this region as a great place for business. Exceptional workforce, room to grow. Germana Community College, Piedmont Virginia Community College, with that customized workforce training is very important. Another asset that the regional group brings to all the counties is University of Virginia. It strongly positions us to attract and grow technology companies. And again, with that, it gives us that innovation and research credibility. Entrepreneurial ecosystem. The culture of entrepreneurship is really nurtured, is really encouraged throughout the region. And what's neat about it, and we identify pretty clearly, it's not just encouraged, but it's nurtured here and supported to get to that next level. And also our founding fathers. I thought you guys would be pleased to see that James Madison is now also a very important president to our region, you've always known that. And I think it is true that when you think about it, it's not just that their homes are here, but the authors of two very important documents were here. And Julie said it very well, it's quality and excellence in the past, present, and the future. This is a forward-thinking region, and that's something that we need to really capture and appreciate about what we do here. Quality of life, another theme that came up over and over again throughout the whole process was just, it's just a great place to live. And although my husband grew up in the area, it's, I've just been here a year, and I love it. And I've lived in fourteen states, so I do think I can, I can speak with at least some authority about other places in the country, this is way nicer, I'm really enjoying it. And then our brand strategy. The next step will really be moving full speed ahead to implement our marketing plans and start telling our story with our new messaging and other features. So when, for example, we're supporting an Orange County project, some of this messaging may change to really support what you all have and what your assets are. So it may look a little different than a presentation in Green County, supporting a Green County project, for example. So we'll be customizing. We have a regional brochure under development, we'll also develop some other collateral. I'm going to Atlanta next week to start sharing our new messaging and our new brand with some site selection consultants, so we're already moving forward. In conclusion, I'd like to show you our old logo and new logo in context of our two regional target markets. I know you all have focused a lot on the Orange County targets. The two regional targets are business and financial services and information technology. And when you look at our old brands surrounded by the types of companies that are business and financial services that we'd like to attract to the area or grow to the area when they're here, the old logo and the new logo. Same for information technology, the old logo and the new logo. And I think our new logo tells our target industries where we are and shows our targets that it looks like they belong here with us. In conclusion, special thanks to Pam Fitzgerald and her amazing team at the Ivy Group. I hope you feel like I do, that this is a very fresh, vibrant, cheerful look for us. We think it really reflects what's going on here. Our new website address is centralvirginia.org, so it's H. Coffin at centralvirginia.org. TJ Ped will still get you there, we hope that'll continue. And again, I just want to thank you all so much for your commitment and support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. None? Thank you so much. If you do come up with other questions, Julie and Karen will keep you informed as to our progress, but we certainly appreciate, thank you.
One question, if you had any chance to interface with the businesses and their perception of this change?
Only as far as investors are concerned. We haven't heard too much yet. I will tell you that today, the Daily Progress had a very, very positive editorial. So if that's something you may want to take a look at, I thought it was very positive about the name change, might not be very, Central Virginia may not be very exciting words, but that they, they were complimenting us on really capturing all of our partners with that name change and said several other things. The Secretary Chang and Martin Bryley, and Martin's really our top economic developer for the state, very, very positive comments. And again, one of the comments, one of the attendees at the event said to the reporter that was in the, at least the Daily Progress edition of the reporting on the event, was that regardless of the name change, it doesn't mean we're going to track the project overnight. The name change doesn't change everything. At this, we can really only sell what localities have to offer. At the same time, what I think's exciting about it, it's a regional collaboration. And if all those partners, I mean, the six counties out of the eight funded the brand assessment initially to start that process. And for the, for the counties to really feel like this name speaks to them and they are part of this region, and I think at that event Thursday, and Julie can speak to that, you really saw this wasn't a Charlottesville Almar thing, it was a regional thing. And that, to me, is what's so exciting. If I can keep Fluvana excited and Orange County excited and engaged and all the other counties, I think that's really when we can make a difference by working together.
Thank you. One thought, you mentioned regional partnerships a couple of times. If you look beyond just the members within the Central Virginia Regional Partnership, there are surrounding similar partnerships, you know, obviously if you look at the outline of the counties, we have other adjacent counties that aren't, aren't here.
Right.
Do you, do you see in the future more direct collaboration with, with those organizations? You know, to our east, obviously, there's Spotsylvania, Stafford, Fredericksburg, that, that whole collection of, of activity, as well as south toward Richmond, there's another, another group and on. Have there been discussions about, you know, sort of a super-regional, if there is such a thing, collaboration? Because it seems to me there are times when that could make some sense.
Well, I would say for the right project, we'll bring together whatever partners we can. And I'll give you an example, Louisa County had a project visit, and we weren't just, we, TJ Ped, Central Virginia Partnership, provided a lot of the data and statistics for that project. And we made the point to that client that, yes, they're part of the Central Virginia region, it was still TJ Ped at the time, but the, the workforce that they draw on is also Greater Fredericksburg and Greater Richmond regional groups. And we, in fact, for Fredericksburg, we use their whole labor force, but for Richmond, we just use the western counties and actually pull together demographics that show, for example, that they had a labor force of not a hundred and sixty-five thousand, but almost eight hundred thousand or something. I may not be quoting the numbers correctly, but we're happy to do that. I also think that the regional economic development directors, other people like me in these roles throughout the state, we are all a pretty tight group. I mean, again, I'm a newcomer, so I don't know them all as well as they know each other. But I am, I'm happy to do that when it makes sense and when it can help us make a difference. You've got the right project, I'll invite Fredericksburg businesses to come help you. I mean, you know, we're happy to do whatever it takes to, that, you know, kind of fits that potential prospect.
I see this is made in China, we guarantee some Chinese viruses and other ill, other problems?
I have no idea, that's a good question. You may not want to use it, I don't know. Hey, you know, that's the problem with the, we have a pretty small budget, so we go for the, the pricing. I didn't realize it said that on there, I should have noticed that. Should have at least chipped it off, right?
No, then we wouldn't have been able to protect ourselves.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, next we have the Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report. Before you actually start, in the beginning when we call the meeting, no, come on up. I was, I was supposed to say one more thing, and I forgot. Based on what we have for the agenda, whereas listed that the budget work session might possibly be after seven-thirty, it very well could be before that. With that?
All right. Good afternoon. As we see our snapshot for the first quarter of two thousand thirteen, our youth numbers are still looking good. We had a soccer, winter soccer clinic with Culpeper Soccer Association. It was something new and it was very successful, we had thirty kids in it. Our wrestling club did very well against the local competition with the following wrestlers placing in their division at Mid-Atlantic, Middle-Atlantic Wrestling Association Championship. Wyatt Mills, fourth place, Austin Shiplet, third place, Chance Bauer, second place, David Steigler, first place, and Stella Steigler, first place. That's right, Stella Steigler. She actually didn't have enough competition in her weight class, had to wrestle two classes up and still won her weight class. So very good for Stella.
And let me tell you, I know her, and I can attest, she is one bad chick. And I mean it, there's a little DJ on, on, on the radio, and they called a bad butt chick of the day. She should get the bad butt chick of the day, because she's a cool kid.
And these are our T-shirts we're going to give this year. We decided to do T-shirts instead of trophies or medals, and they'll be able to throw it. Our spring gymnastics, the numbers are up, actually eighty-nine in this session from seventy-five in our winter session. And our basketball clinics, the basketball ours will have enough to go at both Locust Grove Primary School and Orange Elementary School, so we'll have two clinics in the spring. Our License to Slide program was down a little bit from, to forty-nine from sixty-three passes last year, but there was a thirty-dollar increase from Massanuddin. And actually, when there's more snow in March than there is in December, it's kind of hard to scale ski passes in December, so. But there's no cost to the county, and we actually make some on each one, so we will continue to offer this service to our patrons. The movie tickets, Regal increased their tickets fifty cents effective February first. We decided to do a promotion. We stockpiled at the end of January, advertised that they were going up to seven-fifty March first, and sold them for seven dollars through February. In the previous twelve months since we started selling, we sold about two hundred. In February, we sold a hundred and sixty-four tickets. So they had no expiration, people stocked up, and at seven-fifty, they're still a good value for Regal Cinemas. Our Tai Chi class for adults is steadily growing. We started with six students in November, and actually, since this come out, came out, we picked up two more, so we actually have fifteen now with a steady base of ten to twelve every Thursday. So it's been a very good program. Our Parks and Recreation Foundation is now in operation, and we hope to have some exciting things to present in the future, both short term and long term. And our first project actually is in your district, Ms. Abbs. We are undertaking an improvement project at the Barbertown Park that will include a six-foot wide, one-third mile-long walking trail around the perimeter of the park. A donation of three hundred tons of crusher-run material for the trail has been secured from Cedar Mountain Stone. We are conducting a capital campaign for both individual slash family and corporate donors with specific sponsorships for tribute benches and a drinking fountain. We are asking the community to invest in itself through tax-deductible donations. We hope to have the trail open and in use by May first, with other improvements happening as donations and sponsorships come in.
I'm passing along a donation sheet for him, just in case you didn't bring enough along.
So that's what I have, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. Next, we have public comment. Anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. The first one is Bud Moody, one oh one Winchester Lane, Locust Grove, Virginia.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of board. My name is Bud Moody. I live in Lake LeWoods Community, and I've been a member of the Lake LeWoods Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company for eight years. I served as the rescue chief there in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. I have with me this evening our current chief, Steve Kalia, who was back here, and former chief Benny Taylor, who's also with us. I'm here to talk about the budget proposal that's before you, and I'm not here to plead for an increase over last year's funding or to ask you for any new support. We're simply requesting that you maintain your support of Low Volunteer Fire and Rescue Station Twenty-Nine at the same level as prior years. The budget submitted to you for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen includes a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in the ninety thousand allocation that has been provided to Station Twenty-Nine for several years to supplement our own fundraising activities. This amounts to twenty-seven point seven percent reduction. The rationale for such a significant reduction- The rationale for such a significant reduction is difficult to comprehend when one looks at our increasing call volume and our increasing annual operating costs. We are an all-volunteer fire and rescue company that purchases and maintains property, plant, and equipment for use by us and the county's paid personnel who are stationed at our facility. We provide sleeping, cooking, physical fitness facilities to the county employees, and quarters for one county-owned ambulance and a response vehicle. We also house two company-owned ambulances and one company-owned response vehicle. Last year, these vehicles were used to respond to more than one thousand one hundred rescue calls in Lake of the Woods and elsewhere in Orange County. We recently replaced an aging ambulance with a new ambulance costing one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This, this vehicle was purchased with monies from our own fundraising and a seventy-five thousand dollar state grant costing the county of Orange zero dollars. In addition to expanded coverage, the availability of several emergency vehicles at Station Twenty-Nine has afforded the county of Orange greater flexibility and reduced capital costs because we are able to cover first-two calls with our ambulances when the county-owned ambulance is out of service or needed at another station to cover a shortage there. We have also loaned our ambulances to the volunteers in Stations Twenty-One and Twenty-Three when their equipment was out of service and when they needed an additional unit. All of the fuel for the county-owned vehicles is provided by and paid for by us. All infrastructure costs, utilities, and maintenance are paid for by us. We purchase our members' duty uniforms and pay for their certification training and continuing education. We pay for their immunizations, drug testing, and the Virginia Volunteer Rescue Squad Association life insurance. The only personal financial compensation our fire and rescue volunteers receive from the county is a one hundred dollar credit against their annual personal property tax. When you consider this and the fact that we raise the majority of our own operating revenue, I believe you'll agree with me, the county of Orange has been getting a good deal. Moreover, the county builds our patients for their ambulance transports. Last fiscal year, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars was collected by the county for all transports by Station Twenty-Nine, including combined volunteer and career crews. Of this number, one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars was collected for transport, transports performed by all volunteer crews only. These collections do not come back to us, but they go into the county's general fund. And now, regardless of this positive cash return, we're being asked to take a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in the funds we had been receiving. We believe this proposed course of actions an insult to the dedicated men and women who freely volunteer their time because you're sending a signal that their service is not appreciated. Negative messages such as this may well result in a drop in current and future volunteers. Accordingly, accordingly, excuse me, we ask that you preserve what you have instead of starting a decline that could eventually lead to the demise of this county's volunteer emergency medical services. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The second speaker we have is Chuck Wallace, one nine three zero eight Constitution Highway.
Uh, my name is Chuck Wallace. I'm the owner of Orange County Towing. Uh, it's come to our attention that a piece of property that we own, I put an easement in without asking the county to come across property that's owned by the county. I've written you guys a letter apologizing for it. I'd like to try to get permission to cross the property. Um, it also came to our conclusion that, or our attention, that we're not zoned properly to store wrecked vehicles that we have gotten from the Sheriff's Department, Town Police, State Police. Just pretty much asking for permission to cross your property, to get to our property at this point, um, and eventually find out the proper way of zoning it. So, uh, I can continue to do work for Orange County. That's about it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. And there's no one else in?
No, sir, no.
Okay. Uh, do we have any board comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. Um, there've been some very early discussions, particularly last Thursday night at the Planning Commission level, about having a, some type of a joint meeting of the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Authority, and possibly even some members of, of this board to begin the process of focusing on the development of the Route Three area. One of the things that the Conference of Plan identifies is the need to look in more detail at the actual planning for development of that area. And it's been suggested, and there've been some early discussions at least, that that sounds like a way to begin kicking off that, that initiative. Um, I think it's timely to do that fairly soon because the Planning Commission did vote to start the process of announcing the public hearings to review the con plan, which will be, it looks like their first meeting in May is as early as it can be scheduled. So the things are beginning to line up to make it timely to do this. And so, at this point, there's no action to be taken or anything else. It's just that it was discussed as an item and wanted to make everybody aware of that, that discussion and that possibility going forward.
Okay.
As we get further into that master planning process, obviously landowners would have to be included in that process as well.
And maybe even other interested parties. I mean, there are no real details at this point as to how that will take shape exactly. But we have, in addition to the board, we have at least two bodies that obviously will have roles in the process. And it's, I think it's a good idea to get them together early and begin getting, think about it and benefit from their expertise.
All right. Who, who's going to take charge of directing that idea? Is that Donald and, and the Planning Commission or?
It, and it, it probably will come from the two chairmen. Both chairman, I've actually spoken to both chairman about it. And they're, they're both, you know, ready to do it. They're, they think it's a good idea and is a good next step. And so, I think they're probably just waiting for some type of a nod that says, you know, begin the process of putting that together. I, I should mention that as, as a fourth group, the staff, County Attorney as well as Greg Zodi's office would, would be participants as well at, at some level in this. So it's, while it, it's a big herd of people to get your arms around, at some point, you know, very likely there'll be working groups formed and fewer people involved and these kind of things. But, but that's unknown at this point.
I can't imagine we start off and, you know, say, we're going to plan this entire area. But we're going to look at segments and we say, how do they fit together? So that you come up with a sort of a master plan for the entire area that is consistent with the, uh, the, the various stakeholders that, uh, are involved, which includes preservation groups as well as, uh, as well as landowners and the various elements of the county with regard to planning and economic development.
Okay. Well, keep us posted then.
So would the board like for the priority that's in dormancy now to be kind of unmarked as undormant and take this as the start of whatever will start to happen on the fourteen priorities? I think there's an update on those coming up, so that's why I'd want to head, I'd want to reflect that if that's the intention of the board.
Well, I think that if we're going to do that, then it's needs to probably be under some type of action item because this is board comment. So I don't know that a board comment procedurally, this is where we actually even, um...
I'm not sure we're ready to take a formal step yet. It's just, I think it was sort of preliminary, everybody...
It's a, it's a, it's a board.
It is, it's exactly that.
The purpose is it's, it's board comment. It's, it's information. And if we want to give our blessing to some type of, it, it, procedurally, it probably ought to be some type of, um, action item.
My only suggestion is to take it from gray to not colored. But we can bring it up later.
That could, that could form the basis of an action item is that we, you know, give some schedule and some meat to that, that item. That's one possible way of doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, we'll chat about it when we get to that point again. Uh, all right. Anybody else have anything? All right. In that case, we'll move on to the action items. Uh, first one, seven A, memorandum of agreement between the county of Orange and Lake of the Woods regarding emergency, excuse me, notifications. Nikki.
Good evening, members of the board. In front of you in your board packet, you should have a copy of the Lake of the Woods updated MOU. Um, in this MOU, we did go through and revise it and update it with the correct notification system that we're using. We made it more generic, actually, as systems merge and technology advances, we can still call it one thing. Um, the MOU or the MOA establishes the relationship between the Lake of the Woods Association and the Orange County Board of Supervisors and defines the obligations and responsibilities of each in implementing the mass emergency notification system to alert residents who are located in the inundation zone of one of the Lake of the Woods dams. Again, like I said, it has been updated to reflect the current emergency action dam plan and the mass notification system that we are using. This MOA has gone in front of the Lake of the Woods Association and they did approve it on the March twentieth. It's staff, it's staff's recommendation to up, adopt the updated MOA.
Okay.
This is, uh, I worked on this on the other side back in two thousand six and seven. And it's pretty much the same thing, but a lot of the elements have been shifted over to the emergency plan, which is updated more frequently. This last was updated, what, six, seven years ago?
Yes.
So the, uh, this, this is a, is not dependent upon, uh, a lot of the things that originally made it time-sensitive. So this thing is, uh, will last a lot longer with all the changes showing up in the emergency plans.
One of the questions that I had as I was going through here was it, this is narrowly defined, it appeared to me, to the inundation issue. I, i- is there either something else or a reason this should be looked at more broadly? Because I, the, the new term that you were using of mass notification or I might, or whatever the actual words are, uh, mass, mass emergency notification system struck me as something that at least potentially could be a little bit more broadly applied to, uh, other situations, I don't...
Well, this, this is one, I mean, you could say, do we have one with the town or anybody else with any other facility? Uh, I mean, it could, it could expand into a whole bunch of things. The specific reason that this was put together was because the, uh, the Lake of the Woods Association has to have an emergency plan for their dam. And, and the emergency notification, given the county's capability to do that, seemed to be the best place to, to fit that in.
Right.
It, it, there are, there are elements of this thing which are, are, you know, protect the county from having certain obligations with regard to it. But it does provide a, a means of it. And the whole thing was orig, based upon the state's requirement for an emergency action plan for the dam alone. I mean, we could, you could look and say, do we have other facilities in the county that have the need for emergency notifications? Uh, you know, I mean, you could talk whether the nuclear power plant and everything else does that, but I don't think we, we wanted to go there. This is just very specific. I would make a motion that we adopt this MOA.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, in that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nikki. Okay. Seven B, funding requests from Lake of the Woods Association regarding replacement equipment for the operation of Channel eighteen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there was a request put forth by the Lake of the Woods Association for funding of the SCALA system in amount of twelve thousand, eleven dollars and thirty cents. Um, it came before the board previously and there was discussions about, um, this request and the towns, um, or the town of Orange and their notification system and also whether, um, either or both would enter into some sort of MOU to, um, address the expectations for the communication, um, vehicle of Channel eighteen and Channel ten in town. Um, we have met with Lake of the Woods extensively and they have no problem, um, entering into some sort of agreement that is crafted, um, of course, that they approve as well. To formalize the arrangements in regards to Channel eighteen, um, I don't believe that the town of Orange has any interest at this point to enter into an MOU, but they're not particularly against it. Um, but the request is still before you regarding the, the funding of the, the system. And I, I believe that that would be what would trigger the creation of the MOU. We didn't have, um, the county attorney begin to work on this until there was an indication that you all wanted to fund this. So it's before you now to, um, provide direction as to the, um, funding of this purchase.
I would like to support it, obviously.
I kind of was waiting for you to make your motion, so.
Uh, I would move that we would, uh, provide the funding for this. Uh, but that the funding be contingent upon completion of an MOU satisfactory to both sides. So that the county would then have this as another vehicle for notifying the county of a broad range of emergencies.
The, this, the system that they're requesting, the SCALA system, or SCALA, I forget how to pronounce it, is it, is it a single-purpose use such that it's only for, uh, these emergency notifications or messages that the, the county would want to spend?
No, no. It can be used for any variety of, of information displayed on Channel eighteen.
It, I mean, it, it's, one of my reactions at this point is that should, should we be thinking more in terms of cost-sharing this thing with Lake of the Woods as opposed to funding it? I assumed it had multiple uses and I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm debating with myself as to whether or not it, this is an item that we would be more, uh, acceptable or reasonable to, to think in terms of some other, I mean, I don't think the county wants to own the system. And, and therefore, uh, the, the way this is being presented at this point, it'd just be, in essence, a county-owned...
Piece of equipment.
Piece of equipment that, that the county doesn't necessarily need to or want to own. I'm not against the, the concept, it's just a finding a way to make it work within our other constraints.
I think, I think the expectation is for us to purchase it and not own it. Purchase it and hand it over to the, the lake. It, I don't believe we'd have the warranty in our name or, or actually own it. I think we would just fund it.
There's, I mean, besides, besides this particular piece of equipment, there's a whole range of other equipment that's involved in producing the, uh, uh, in, you know, in broadcasting and in producing the, uh, the various shows that they use. I mean, this is, this is...
Okay. Well, then that's what actually scares me then. Because when the next piece of a part, you know, that fits in there, needs to be purchased, are we, are, are we going to pay for that too? And when the next piece goes out, are we paying for that too? And then the next piece goes out, are we paying for that too? Oh, and then wait a minute, when it happens in Orange, are we paying for it in Orange? And when it happens in Gordonsville, are we paying for it in Gordonsville? And then have we just bought a cable company? Or a channel, I mean, not a company. So that...
I see, I see. Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that whatever that entire set of technology or capability is, uh, if, if this, if, if this is a piece that could be our cost-share piece of that whole thing, that would, that would cause me to look at it a little differently than just, you know, buy, buy me this piece and hand it to me.
Well, maybe, maybe it's a, a different is not looking at that entire amount, but looking at something to say that the, uh, the Lake of the Woods Channel eighteen will maintain the capability of delivering emergency messages on a MOU agreement that the county funds to the extent of a couple thousand a year or something. That would involve all equipment rather than just, than...
Oh, no. Oh, a couple thousand dollars, period. Couple thousand dollars a year?
All right. Well, we, we have...
I'm not committing something, I'm not committing something like, that, that, that's, that's, I'm not articulating myself very well right now, but, uh-uh.
We have, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, do we have a second?
Okay, no second.
Hearing done. Um.
Let me, uh, let me ask, uh, do we have some, is there some indication of some level of support for making that capability available?
I, I would like to see some other options as to how to get that capability. And I, I, I don't, really don't like the idea of the county buying a system and then handing it over. It seems to me that, I actually like your idea of treating it more like we do, uh, other organizations, uh, that they provide a service to the community and, and we, you know, give them a, uh, or they're these candidates on an annual basis for some type of a, uh, supplement for that. We do that with, with other organizations. And I, I, I think I would like to see what a proposal to treat it that way would look like. Yeah, I understand you, you can't make ongoing commitments, but.
I am more, I am more vehemently opposed to that than giving them the twelve thousand dollars. I would rather give them the twelve thousand dollars than commit to something every year. And I don't, I mean, I, I am vehemently against it.
Well, I, I, but I, but I, I come to your other thing, when the next thing fails, uh, to be able to sustain this, uh, uh, capability, another piece, uh, fails and we need to buy another one of those, do we have to get in and, uh, and, and pay for that as well? I think that, that concerns me, uh, probably even more. You could end up with a situation where, uh, as you say, we own a channel.
And, and quite frankly, if we were gonna take that twelve thousand dollars, I'd give it to the, to the gentleman who were just here talking.
What's that, what's that?
Then I think we get more out of that. I, ooh, mm, I'll just stop.
Okay.
All right.
Motion dies from lack of a second.
Okay.
Uh, move on then to seven C, resolution initiating amendments to section seventy dash thirty-eight, the Orange County Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, this item's mine as well as the next one. Uh, I sent y'all the memo a while back. Uh, the first, this item addresses my recommendation that we modify our zoning penalty ordinance. The state code allows some, uh, what I view to be some more effective penalties in our current ordinance. And so I'm asking the board to initiate, uh, asking the planning commission to begin the process of amending our zoning ordinance to incorporate the state authorized penalties for zoning violations.
So moved.
Seconded. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You're too quick. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Well, actually, as a zoning change, do we need a roll call?
But all you're doing at this point is initiating, starting the process.
Getting the process, we got a lot.
Uh, second item is also a zoning amendment process. I'm asking to initiate, uh, our proffer ordinance, uh, which is just one code section. Most of our proffer rules are in our proffer guidelines, but the actual enabling ordinance, uh, I've, it's not, doesn't match state code very well, and so I'm recommending that we modify our ordinance so that it more closely tracks state code and what we aren't, aren't allowed to do for proffers. And so I'm just asking you into the process, be initiated to amend our zoning ordinance with respect to proffers.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Uh, seven E recruitment retention program offered by Virginia Fire Chiefs Association, John Harkins.
Good evening, members of the board. Several weeks ago, the County of Orange's Department of Fire and EMS applied to the Virginia Volunteer Workforce Solutions for a volunteer recruitment and retention grant, or to be involved in this program slash study. Uh, we received information just late this afternoon that we were actually accepted into the program. What this program is, it's, it's sponsored by the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association and the International Fire Chiefs Association. It's a two-year program, and what it does is it uses GIS and marketing information to instead of taking a shotgun approach to recruiting and, and retaining our volunteers, is to have a more direct approach. You know, if a company markets a new product, they look at the demographics of who are gonna use that product, and they target their mar- marketing accordingly. The five volunteer fire departments in the county have all given their verbal, um, approval and are very interested in becoming involved with this program. What's gonna be provided to us is what they call a GIS tapestry. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna take the demographics of our volunteer agencies, our county, and develop a, a target approach to provide us with marketing materials to go ahead and, and recruit new volunteer firefighters. Another part of this program is also to provide leadership training. One of the biggest problems or the reason we lose volunteers is lack of leadership within the volunteer organizations. That, that's just something nationwide, so a big part of this is providing leadership, um, training to the volunteer, uh, fire departments. The rescue squads, although they cannot be directly involved in this program, will be able to per, um, participate in the training, and I'm sure there's gonna be some crossover as, as far as recruitment of those volunteers. There's not gonna be any cost associated to the county except for our effort, and what I mean by that is gonna be the Department of Fire and EMS. We're gonna provide the monthly reports that are required of this, um, this program slash study. And, um, what we need from y'all is approval, um, because what they want is buy-in. And we have the buy-in from the volunteer fire departments, you have buy-in from our organization. We're gonna go ahead and provide that administrative, um, support, and what they're looking for is county buy-in. Ms. Sumbs is obviously very excited, I think, about this program, and, uh, we hoping you are too.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got some other things to talk about. I mean, I, I'm in favor of this thing. But we don't have any, we give these guys a hundred bucks a year. I mean, not that that's insignificant, but it's pretty much like a dime tip on a fifty dollar, uh, uh, restaurant bill. I mean, I think we need something that, that tries to incentivize the individuals. And I, and, and there's a lot of incentive of the fact that we are serving our, our, uh, our fellow, uh, uh, fellow citizens. But I think, uh, especially for some of the younger ones, where it is more difficult for them to get out for training, get out for calls, uh, we need to think of something, uh, a little more robust for an incentive program. And, uh, I know that it's costing us a lot for the county staff. And every time we lose, uh, uh, volunteers, we have to supplement them with more county staff, and that, uh, drives up our, our, uh, costs. We started out, uh, back in oh four with Orange County, uh, Fire and EMS Department with a budget of about, uh, a half a million dollars a year. Now it's three and a half. Uh, I mean, and, uh, if, uh, if we can't hang on to the volunteers in terms of, uh, incentives or whatever, uh, there's, I mean, we're already having to provide, uh, three of the, uh, of the, uh, four ambulances in the county are all county, county staff. And, uh, the fourth down at Lake of the Woods is about half and half. The same thing, uh, we've had to put, uh, fire department, uh, fire guys at, uh, at twenty-nine. I guess you've got them down at twenty-five and twenty-one now.
Yeah, what, what we do is during the daytime, Monday through Friday, we'll move our medic unit down to the mon run station. If it's a fire call, obviously, we take the fire truck and EMS call the ambulance. We provide support to the Lake of the Woods Fire Department. We also provide it to the Barbersville Fire Department.
Yeah, I mean, and, 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 uh, that's one guy to make sure you've got a fully trained man to do, uh, so he can take a lot of less experience.
I'd be willing to look into some type of, um, incentive program that correlated to the amount.
Of effort.
Of, of service, you know, I mean, like, I was sitting here thinking of something, you know, if, if the particular person doesn't have health insurance, but they give so many X hours and, and we covered their health insurance for them. I mean, I don't know if you legally could do that, but I mean, something to, to look into, but then they go, oh, I've already got health insurance, but maybe, you know, something.
Well, I, I'm, we've just lost, and I don't have to say we've lost, guys have, uh, have been volunteering for us, young guys, you know, in their early twenties. Uh, but now they've got a job, uh, they've gone to the army, they've, uh, they've, you know, there are, there are a variety of things that, uh, that, that pull them away. And I, you know, and I think if there's an incentive program, they might hang around for those midnight shifts or some of the others to, uh, to keep, uh, to keep going. And I, uh, I'd like to see, uh, uh, reconstituting of the Orange County Volunteer, uh, Rescue Squad, which, uh, covers, uh, three of the, uh, of the four stations. And I'd just like to, like to look at something there that does that. I was just looking at what it costs to, to provide a career guy for a twelve-hour shift and somewhere between three and four hundred dollars. So, every time I can get a volunteer to start covering them, but they have to cover them reliably, and that's, that's a problem for a job. You know, if the guy says, well, I'll be here, but, uh, last minute, uh, John has to come up with somebody. And so you've gotta have, you've gotta have incentive program that if you don't show up, you lose the whole month's pay or something like that, or, or, I mean, it's, you know.
They have to have a similar level of, um, certification or training or.
Sure, and, and they, they have to maintain their certification, they have to attend training, there's a, there's a whole range of things that are necessary. But I think we need to be looking at it because, uh, I just hate to see that you look at that curve and it's going way up. Break it out and show it to you later.
One of the, uh, items identified in this, in this program is, it says it includes recruit, recruitment strategy ideas. I mean, maybe in addition to a compensation element, there, there are other things that would, uh, either make it more feasible or easier or more convenient or fit their schedules better. I don't know, I mean, it's, it's possible there's, there's a fairly lengthy list of obstacles, if you wanna think of it that way.
Part of the. Part of the program is to actually develop a volunteer recruitment and retention program specific to your locality. So, you know, some of the things here are givens, and there's some other things that are still dynamic, like this plan. You know, what will that plan actually look like? And that's where we're gonna be able to possibly do some creative things because this is part of a safer grant that the state of Virginia, um, the Fire Chiefs Association and International Fire Chiefs, um, receive. But this is also a study, so it's not, we're gonna be trying some unconventional or cutting-edge methods to recruit and retain the volunteers.
I think that, that's the message, is that the compensation might be an important part of that. I, I don't disagree with that. But it's possible there are other things that the, I, I know, I have heard comments about the, you know, the obligation is something that it, it times makes difficult for people because they, they're in a, in a situation where they do have to change their schedules for what reason, and they, you know, they feel like they're, they've let, let the place down, and so they're, they're concerned.
If you, if you have a compensation system, and a guy's gonna lose revenue, I'm sure that, uh.
He might be a little bit more.
Well, not only that, uh, but there are other people who are in that same category with, uh, will swap, uh, duty for him.
Right.
I mean, even without compensation, there are certain guys down at Lake of the Woods who, uh, who always can get a relief because they're always there for everybody else when they need the relief. Uh, and there's some, there's some ways, uh, that this can do it.
But looking broadly, as you, as you suggest, I, I think is, uh, that's the right attitude, at least.
We can't continue what we've been doing. Um, and then I'm not saying that just for Orange County. I'm saying that the volunteer services in general, we have, have to do something different because volunteerism has declined over the last twenty years. So if we keep continuing to do what we've done in the past, obviously, we aren't gonna be successful. And it's changing times, and we have to change with the times and use different methods.
And part of the issue too is that we now have seventy percent plus out commuting, and some of our volunteer base is no longer living and working as much in the community, so they don't have the accessible hours to volunteer.
See, I would just refer to that thing.
All right, well.
Call a question?
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And we'll, we'll look forward to hearing those creative solutions. Okay, uh, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. I have one. I talked to Christine Bodendorf, uh, about staying on litter control, and she said yes. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, look for a motion to approve that, or just.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, okay.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more question related to boards, commissions, and committees. It may come up later in the, um,
The other.
CSA monthly report, but Alicia Vines did request that you all consider, um, her putting her name in the hat for the state and local advisory team as a local government representative. And I didn't know if you wanted to, to give any comment to that, or if you wanted to, to think about that as the, um, weeks progress.
What does that involve?
She has left the room, but it involves, um, her giving comments to policies and procedures, giving input. If you, um, I believe it was, I'm having a hard time with the computer today.
Yeah, we.
But as the informational item, um, talked about, the, uh, last page of her report, spoke to the, the folks that were on the committee, and so far, it's program managers for the health department, or the courts, or, um, juvenile justice, social services, but no one so far for, um, local government. And she really feels that a, a strong, typically rural county voice would be of benefit.
What kind of state policies would that affect?
She would actually be better, um, to answer that question.
What's the word again?
Slapped the state and local advisory team, um.
And she want, uh, do they?
She wants, what she said was, I feel we should have a voice coming from local governments and CPTs in regards to policy and procedures and other changes related to CSA. If it pleases the board, I would like to request more information regarding this team and find out the procedure to be appointed and serve with the intention of doing so.
So, yes, I would like, she gets it. She's asking.
So, then, if she, if there's an alibi attorney who, uh, affects CSA.
But she's asking to find out more information and to.
With the intention that she's gonna say, hey, um, look at me, I wanna be on this, this, um.
Go forth and be part of the team.
Yep.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I'd love to have something.
So, we'll communicate that to, to her, and if she needs a letter of support from you all, we'll communicate that as well.
Okay. Uh, discussion items, uh, Tourism Advisory Committee, Julie.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd also ask, um, Lee Moyer to, to step up so that we can, uh, talk to you about the formation of the Tourism Advisory Committee. There was a series of discussions that have happened over time and pretty much punctuated us both by Jay Billy coming the everyday and talking about tourism in the county and talking about the creation of a, um, Tourism Advisory Committee. Uh, staff, uh, Lee, Ashley, myself, some of the ladies and admins, looked at a number of examples. We took the Stanton example as one example that made sense to us and, um, have put forth a, a draft of what we've proposed for the Tourism Advisory Committee. We feel that it fits well into the mission that was adopted in twenty twelve with, um, growing a business and having a sense of community with visitors and residents alike. And we believe that it would be a, a good supplement to the Tourism Roundtable. Um, the Tourism Roundtable already has, uh, information exchange going that's productive. The folks in the tourism community can find out more about what's going on and, and share what's going on with their, uh, attraction. But this might help the board, Lee, and myself, um, form policy and direction for the county as a whole and serve to promote a unified vision of tourism for the county. So, um, I'm not sure what Ms. Moyer has to, to add, but what's before you is a skeleton of an, of a, of an idea, and we'd be happy if you all were amenable to it to, um, put forth some names to fill some of these roles that are listed.
I think would be a, a definite asset to the tourism community, and it would definitely help me out with long-range vision, um, marketing and different other policies that may came, may come up.
How would you, the, the, my first reaction was the, how does this advisory committee interact or work with or replace, whatever the case might be, the roundtable? Like, I'm, I'm not, I, I couldn't, I couldn't convince myself that we need both, or that, that there, there was a, uh, a collaborative environment out there for both of them. Maybe, maybe there is, but, uh, I was a little concerned.
They would complement, they would complement one another. A lot of the individuals that attend the Tourism Roundtable are strictly there to tell the group what all is going on at their attraction or business. And it's more of an information exchange. Julie and I, in discussions with Jay Billy and others, have see this Tourism Advisory Committee as a committee that would be more of a um.
Advisory?
Well, very much so, advisory. They would, we would bring ideas to them or they would bring ideas to us of ways to enhance tourism in the community, ideas that they have with marketing or long range plans, goals that they think we should be reaching for in the tourism community. And then we'd work as a collective group to attain those.
Similar to the Youth Advisory Committee. Um it doesn't, Alyssa does not report to that committee and and they don't um vote on CSA and that kind of thing. But when there is an issue, they do provide the board um industry-specific knowledge for you all to consider that that may not be as uh top of mind for for non-industry specific experts.
I like the idea of this, um my 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 concern is it's too large. I think it's too many people. I think it needs probably be about half that size.
Okay.
Um because if if you're a actual um, if if you wanna get something done, sometimes you you find that you have too many people.
Mm-hmm.
And then my next thing is, okay, so if you can't find somebody from the restaurant industry that wants to be on there, are we just putting somebody on it because they're from a restaurant, but then they're not gonna be active? And I I think you you would be better off to get seven really good quality, active participants who really wanna do it than fourteen placeholders, just to say you got somebody from a restaurant. I mean, I I I think it's a great idea to try to target people from that area. But, you know, so Jay Billy does it right now for the ends of Montpelier, but then his two years is up, so Jay Billy can't be on it again, so it's gotta be somebody else again, but oh well, his two years up, he's gotta go. Or you can reappoint him, well then why do you have a two-year limit?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I I.
The, I understand where you're coming from and the and the thought process behind this was to get, to make sure that all sectors of the tourism community were represented. So that if it was very hospitality-heavy on one side, that the historic attractions and the other entities didn't feel as though we were putting all of our eggs in that basket per se.
Right.
And so that's the reason that it was done like this.
And that's what I think you're gonna find, I I just, I, that just my opinion. I think you're gonna find yourself, then you're trying to appease, oh god, we we're too heavy here, we gotta, ooh, we gotta back up a little bit. And you're making the, you're making the committee happy and you're not actually getting anything done 'cause you're spending so much time.
Mm-hmm.
And you look at, if you're bringing the Chamber of Commerce in, that picks up maybe retails and restaurants and some of that sort of stuff.
Well, some of the reason we brought in some of these groups, and I actually had a pretty elaborate conversation with some folks about it today because their concern was it was too small, we didn't have someone specific from Lake of the Woods, someone specific from this area, that area, whatever. And I tried to explain at that point that um some of these entities, Montpelier, the Chamber of Commerce, Orange Downtown Alliance, are tourism forces that create events that bring in tens of thousands of people. So um they come at it from the festival, we're gonna bring people to town aspect, even though, of course, with the Orange Downtown Alliance and Chamber of Commerce, there will be representatives of restaurants and that kinda thing among their their groups. But the, what I tried to explain there was there didn't need to be a a Lake of the Woods representative or it wasn't the intent of the committee to have like a Phil Rodenberg, a Sam Martin or a whatever on it. If we could get enthusiastic people from a variety of places and allow for some flow of people, thus the terms. Or let's suppose the outgoing member of the ends of Montpelier has one more year left on a two-year term, which doesn't make sense 'cause it's indefinite, but you know what I'm trying to say. Maybe that could be a one-year-at-large member, see how they like it, and then they can move into a two-year slot or whatever.
I think the idea of having terms is okay, just because somebody sorta knows that, yeah, I'm committed for those two years or one year, whatever the term is, uh without any restrictions if a guy's enthusiastic and contributing, I don't mind reappointing people, we do that all the time.
Mm-hmm.
What we also tried to to worry about or tried to give some effort to, the Tourism Roundtable tends to be the museums and the um the chamber and some of the attractions, but you don't often get a um, on what it sparks there, you don't often get a Waha, like Davidson there. You don't often get um a c- a Comfort Inn or a Holiday Inn. And we wanted to try to specifically target those folks so that we could hear their voice. And if if there was a real need for a conference center or something like that, or they wanted to promote conventions, we wouldn't hear that from a James Madison Museum perhaps, but we might hear that from someone else, a a ends of Willagrove or or whatever.
Well, that, I don't.
We do worry with the size. We we brought it from, I think Stanton's is twenty-six, we struggled at seventeen, we got it down to fourteen. We we do worry about the size, but.
It's not, it's not our job on the board to micromanage the size of your group.
But you do want it to be effective. You get to have, you get to have too many people, and I'm here to tell you, come back in a year and tell me if I'm right or wrong, I'll buy you dinner. I'm telling you.
Well.
Didn't we just change a very significant group from ten to five?
Because you don't get. It depends on what you want this group's purpose to be, and that's a question you have to answer.
Absolutely. That's something that Julie and I have talked about with the focus and the and the purpose of this group. And I really do see it as, just as the name says, an advisory group to bring ideas about things that are needed in the community and so that we can work together to find ways to make those goals happen. So we want it to be effective.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'd like to uh to to have you think a little bit about the, you know, some of the names I heard, for example, on the roundtable probably should be on this and in some cases already are on this. And so I I'm not so sure that a single organization might not work better, that you could really focus people on it, particularly if you can get the, Shannon's just the the six, seven or eight people really energetic. You could, you could get a lot out of a group like that.
I don't know that you're gonna get the same people.
I don't know that they would be either, but uh, you know, it it's, I I I think you wanna, you you wanna have a an organization that can have some real energy and that usually is, you know, a a core group.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and and those, that's the group that you wanna highlight and 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 let them know that they're they're making a contribution.
The the Roundtable is.
I'd be careful about diluting it too much.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the Roundtable really is a a source for information exchange. It's a reasonably passive group and it's a reasonably um, forgive me, sometimes frustrating group for those racehorses, you know, the ones that wanna give you advice about marketing, wants to to do that kinda thing. And I almost would hate to to lose the Roundtable because it is a um a good communication tool. It's a good way to get and receive info, but I wouldn't want that Roundtable to serve this function because I'm not sure they're.
And you don't want this to be another Roundtable either, though.
Um and tourism, absolutely.
Yeah. And we have actually.
I guess that's the issue.
Not that there's anything wrong with the Roundtable, it's just more um.
I think it's, but that's my thing, I think you wanna do, what is, my new thing is, what is it that you ultimately wanna achieve?
Mm-hmm.
And if.
Craft this around that.
If you believe it's gonna take fourteen people to achieve what you need to achieve, then it's fourteen people.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're picking fourteen people because you've been told, oh, we gotta have somebody from Chamber of Commerce, you gotta have somebody from Montpelier and you got, I mean, what if you got two really phenomenal people from the ends of Montpelier? And one person that doesn't show up from the restaurants, you're gonna look at that person and go, I'm sorry. I really like you and think you're great and you do a lot of work, but you can't be on it because you don't own a restaurant.
Yeah. And that was part of the purpose for the at-large members as well, but I understand where you're coming from with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have changed the.
Would this, would this group be involved in planning or organizing any functions?
Could be.
Could be.
They could, they could do something like the wedding tour that was just so um powerful a few years back.
Dawn's Wedding Tour.
That is something that.
So that's a little bit different than just an advisory, you're talking about the group that actually would do something.
Well, you'd hope so, just like the Youth Advisory Committee actually does something and.
Oh, man, I.
Yeah.
No, we want a group of people to get together and do absolutely. Oh, let's call Congress, we've already got that.
It it's not supposed to be a passive group, it's supposed to be a.
We're safe.
Well, I I'm just, I'm just saying, that 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 there's one thing to advise the county on policies.
Correct.
Or, uh, you know, but I I suspect that uh if if you have them organizing uh activities, then that becomes a a a different kinda group. I mean, there's, there's, there's both, both aspects of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and it could be fairly.
If you're organizing, you need more than just a couple of core people.
Yeah, I mean, now you're talking about having, uh, you know, really, and and of course, when you go to set up an activity, you may wanna bring in people who aren't necessarily a part of your of your core group
Mm-hmm.
that are gonna take care of X, Y and Z for you.
And that's what we do with the Sesskew Centennial Committee right now, we bring in people that are are not, that that don't attend every meeting, who are our core group, but we bring in them to to help with certainly things.
Obviously, when when you, or I'm assuming when you did this, you kinda have people in mind who have gotten excited that would potentially um fill in those fourteen spots.
Some of them, yes.
Um, I mean.
Well, I think from the standpoint of doing things like a wedding tour or some other big event, uh that having people like that who's a who's a part of the committee can help staff a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good broad spr- spectrum too, so.
Yeah, I think it's similar in size to the Parks and Rec Foundation, which is also an energetic group that hopes to to get things done with the partnership with staff, um.
I think it's a great opportunity to partnership with our with our citizens and accomplish more than what we can as a uh formal county organization.
Yeah, I agree, I I I think you're, you're on to something here, it's just a matter of putting it.
And and I and I think I would probably give you a lot more leeway in in how you wanna put that together as a, as opposed to saying you gotta have somebody from Lake of the Woods. I don't think of Lake of the Woods as a tourist attraction yet.
Well, that could very well be. You have Clearwater, which is from that end, you have Elwood, which is at that end,
Mm-hmm.
you have Floris from that end, and you have, I mean, it's not that you can't have different areas represented within these groups.
Sure, I mean, you do. Yeah.
So how would you like me to proceed?
So you don't need a specific approval, we just go forth and do well?
Well, we would anticipate the board um appointing these folks.
Oh, okay.
And so the next step would be us trying to come up with a list of folks for y'all to consider to appoint, like we do for um.
Oh, okay. So we do take the formal.
Well, you wouldn't, yeah, I thought you were gonna do the appointments. You would, that's the appointment.
Does it have to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the question.
I mean, and this, this, this is kinda where I I I get in. This is, I mean, I think it's great and you go forth and do whatever you want, but I'm here to tell you, you saw our appointment list. When you have a big group of people like that, it it's inevitable, everybody is on fire for something when it first har- when it first comes out. But I bet you even Tim, when hi- his guys start falling off, I bet you he's gonna have a hard time finding people, you know, to to fill the place. And um I don't know that if it's that, how structured does it have to be? And don't make it any more structured than that, because it limits you.
Mm-hmm.
The more involvement you have from us, the more limited you get in with your flexibility to meet the needs that that you as that department head.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's completely their call.
Yeah. I for one would be happy to have you do the appointments and us write you, write each individual a thank you letter for participating. I mean, that would, that would make me comfortable.
With you, Jim.
If that's how the board sees fit, then we will go forth and Julie and I will sit down together and come up with ideas and make it happen. Thank you.
As long as you pick people we like.
I'll make sure I put smiley faces and stuff by their names and stuff, okay?
Okay, um. Edible Fast Parking.
You.
Speaking.
Members of the board.
Speaking of big gr- big events.
Yes.
We leave this to the advisory group or the tourism uh.
Actually, that's O D A.
Done. Um, the Orange Downtown Alliance does a great event that they've turned into an annual, now it'll be the second one this year for the um Edible Food Festival. And they've asked for our support and we do support them in a number of different ways. But one of the requests they asked, we wanted to bring before you all because it seemed that it was um appropriate for y'all to consider it versus making a staff decision. They have requested, um last year, as you know, the the parking lot for the Bor- for the Gordon Building and the businesses around here closed at five. And it was ripped off and tents started to go up and the event happened the next morning. Um this year, they're requesting that the parking lot close at four o'clock on Thursday instead of at Friday because they can take longer to put up their tents, they don't have to pay the tent rental folks um to work after five o'clock on a Friday. And um we've, we've discussed it some because at at some level, we wanna support them as much as possible. But we also recognize that this parking lot is more than a convenience for county employees. It's, it's not that they've come up with some some parking lots for county employees to park in, that's not the issue. The issue that um the treasurer and the sheriff and some others have brought to my attention is that the parking lot, one, serves for the whole block. Um and two, it serves for other purposes. If we have a big court trial, everybody parks in our parking lot um when the Sablet Building gets filled. When Dr. Tucker passed away and the funeral happened, every spot in this parking lot and everywhere else was was filled. And while um we recognize we can't make allowances for everything, we also know that this is the E O C and if there's a deratio and we have to pull in people, if, for instance, and then when one person has to to weed through a bunch of places to get parked and it takes them extra half hour to get to their spot. We just wanted you all to to be aware of the request and if you all want us to to cease using the parking lot at five o'clock Thursday, that's fine. If you all want us to do more like we did last year and have it be five o'clock Friday, that's fine, we're willing to accommodate. We just have had concerns expressed to us from from law enforcement and others about this.
What's your recommendation?
It concerns me and and I offered the compromise of having half of the parking lot taken over and they start with the tents at that end, huh?
Who owns the parking lot? Who owns the parking lot?
I think the town does.
The town owns it, how can we make a decision that that we don't own?
I don't know, last year we made the decision and they asked us, and then this year.
All right, we don't own the parking lot.
I thought we owned it.
No, the town owns it.
We own part of it because they had to pay to to pave and strike the part of it.
And then. And then the funny thing is, the ones that have the numbers out there.
They own theirs too.
Those, those are privately owned by.
Rod Slaton owns them.
And and they've gotten approval from the privately owned ones, the ones that for Rod Slaton's old building
Or no, he sold the property.
or his current building that he worked in, they've given their approval for our nine-one-one folks to have four spaces right there. We just wanted you all to know before August that the request has come and and we're happy to grant it if that's what um seems appropriate.
I I think you were started on a a reasonable path of you, you give them, and maybe.
But it said it's not acceptable.
But but you could give them.
What's not acceptable?
Orange Downtown Alliance.
But maybe there's three, four of them that they could have and you keep the ones closest by here, you know, until, until five.
They said that the layout for the lot event with the one large tent requires it to be set up behind the Gordon, that's the other thing. They're gonna take over right behind the Gordon Building and so it's gonna be, depending on the day and the time and what might be happening with a piece of equipment in here, it might be difficult for public works. It's gonna be a challenge, but it won't be too big of a challenge. But we want you to know it won't be business as usual from Thursday at five to Sunday. But they they didn't like the idea and they didn't want to alter where they set up first and second because they just didn't, um. We have some elderly folks that barely can get from the handicap spot in. It's just, we need to make sure there's signage if we do this, to make people prepared that it's gonna be difficult to park around here that day. We didn't want it to happen and you all say, why didn't you tell us about this?
Sounds like we might not have any authority over it anyway, if we don't own it, so.
Who owns the parking lot?
And we certainly don't own some of the spaces.
And don't want the headache.
So I will share with them that they can do whatever the town wishes for them to do.
If we're sure the town owns the parking lot.
I don't think they own right behind the building, like the the six spaces and.
Well, we need to protect, we need to protect a couple of spots, don't we? Can we do that?
Last year, they gave us four spaces.
Okay. For emergency personnel, I mean.
It's for the four nine-one-one folks and their shift changes.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is you, there there's some area that could be cordoned off, it seems to me, and remain available.
They they have offered the first four spaces of the Rod Slaton Building um for the nine-one-one folks.
Is that, is that satisfactory to you?
Sure.
We'd leave it be between the O D A and the town.
I'll share that.
I don't, would, Tim, your thoughts, please?
I didn't, Julie brought this up to me and I, you know, I talked to the O D A about trying to do something to help them on on reorganizing how they got their tents up and and the pricing. Uh but I don't see giving up everything that we work out of. Right, it's, it's an inconvenience to all of our employees. Not not just that and the people that actually use this building or use any of the other buildings right around here. Not not just that and the people that actually use this building or use any of the other buildings right around here.
And the subject and the community building and all the banks and.
I would think we ought to be able to come to some sort of compromise on on how they can work and and what we can do rather than than everything. I don't know that it should take the whole day.
Well, doesn't the uh Orange Downtown Alliance have uh representatives from the banks and other people who are up and down the street?
They have some, but not all. Um and and we can we can make a plan to have uh backup for our E O C and other such things, but we would just need to make plans for that. Chances are, we won't have a deratio between Thursday and Sunday, but we have to make sure that we're.
I think if we did, we wouldn't have to worry about the tent. It would be gone.
Well, if it was at Lake of the Woods, it would be business as usual here. Last time, Lake of the Woods was crazy and down here was fine.
Well, I would say we would discuss it at the next meeting, but that's tomorrow. And tomorrow, we have E D A, so.
Oh, tomorrow's E D A.
Yeah, and and it's it's in August. It's just, I'm sure they wanna plan and I I don't wanna be an impediment, but I also don't wanna.
If you um would maybe ha- just to bring closure to this, I would suggest um what you've suggested so far. However, um cor- um correspond with the town and and let them know that um the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Services along with the Treasurer and the Commissioner of Revenue have Paul's concerns.
I have.
That's all right. That letter already went.
Okay. I mean.
But nonetheless, if we don't own the parking lot, the town gives it to them.
That's exactly right.
Doesn't really matter.
If we know about it, we can plan our for our staff and our emergency people.
If all else fails, the Sheriff's Office could just come in and take over and do like a um, that's what I'm looking for. You know, like a martial law kinda thing in the parking lot. You take over, bring your guns and your dogs and just take over the parking lot.
Have your SWAT team available and the whole thing.
Sleep assistants would like that.
Be a great attraction for the tourists, wouldn't it? Something maybe, but maybe not the tourists we want.
All right, well, I would say we'll we'll have a continuing dialogue on on that one, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Uh any question on the information items? All right, the committee reports, then I guess we need to do something with this Walmart historical signage.
Um at the last board meeting, Supervisor Frame requested that we um speak with uh Lee, that I speak with Lee and try to uh talk about who might be good to sit down and make some suggestions to Walmart on some signage for the new Walmart on Route Three and um after talking about it, Lee and I thought it might be worthwhile to have Karen Kwan back, who's the Executive Director for the Germana Foundation, and Frank Walker, um Lee and myself um sit down. Again, if you get too big of a group, it's kinda silly, but if you have too small a group, you don't have much depth, but we we were recommending those four um sit down and and talk about um what pictures might be good at the Walmart.
Frank.
Frank Walker.
Frank rec- representing the uh the Civil War era.
Historical. Well, he represents the um Revolutionary War too and as well as the Historical Society in general.
Okay, all right. And Germana's right across the street, so that okay, that sounds reasonable.
Music.
Perfect to me.
That's good.
Might even ask Zach.
Be happy to if you want me to. That's not a bad idea, so shall we add Zach?
I he was, you know, he was our history buff while he was on the board.
Okay, so it'll be Karen Kwan back, Frank Walker, Zach Burkett, Lee and myself that will be asked.
Okay. Uh anything then, information, no. Anything on the calendar? Okay. Um we're now at six thirty three. Is there anything to talk about in the budget work session?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the the twenty five thousand dollars uh for the rescue squad.
We do have a budget work session agenda. It can be as um expedient or as long as you care to have it be.
Well, the question then is, do we eat that chicken I smell or?
Let's go let's go eat, have a closed session.
We also have one matter in closed meeting.
Okay. Well.
Or two, sorry.
All right, in that case, let's move to closed.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Two point two thirty seven eleven eighty seven of the Code of Virginia. And one matter concerning the discussion award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body. Two point two thirty seven eleven eighty twenty nine of the Code of Virginia. Whereas pursuant to two point two thirty seven eleven eighty seven and thirty seven eleven eighty twenty nine of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforesaid matters in closed meeting.
So moved.